Thank you, Rob. I'll call our committee, the whole meeting today, April 11th to order. Is there any declaration of interest on this agenda? Counselor Patterson, I've got yours, thank you. Counselor Deckard.
When we get to the closed session, I will be declaring an interest on one of the items of closed agenda.
Okay, anyone else? Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you. I too will be declaring conflict on one of the closed session items when we get to the closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hutchison.
I will also be carrying a conflict on item eight, three on today's agenda closed session.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, anyone else? All right. Business arising from the minutes. We have a notice of motion here from Counselor DeBreen. Counselor DeBreen, you will move that motion? Is there a seconder? Counselor Kivini, you're going to speak to the motion. Counselor DeBreen, please.
Thank you, Warden Millen. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to put my name forward for election to the Association Municipalities of Ontario Board of Directors County Caucus. I think the resolution before you speaks for itself. It is a requirement. Once the application process or the nomination process opens sometime later this month, I will require this note, this motion or this resolution to accompany that nomination. So I look forward to receiving your support or your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor DeBreen. Counselor Kivini.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. And I just wanted to thank Barb on behalf of the County Council for putting your name forward to represent Gray County at AMO. So thank you, Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any discussion? I too want to extend my thanks to Counselor DeBreen. She's done a wonderful job so far, and I expect that'll continue. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. We have two delegations this morning. The first is we have Bruce King and Stephen Couchman. They're here to speak about the Colapore Wilderness Trail Association. So gentlemen, come on up to the podium. I presume staff have primed you on how to use that microphone?
Good morning, Warden and members of council. My name is Bruce King. I'm the president of the Colapore Wilderness Trails Association. Stephen Couchman, another board member, and I are here to celebrate the 50 years that the Colapore Trails and Gray County have been working together in the Colapore area. The Colapore Trails are a 50-kilometer trail network located in the southwest corner of the town of the Blue Mountains, immediately west of Gray Road Two. If you could, although it's hard to see, on that map, which shows the pub, all the public lands in the Colapore uplands area, in the lower right corner, you can see that the county forest is highlighted there. So it's just west of Gray Road Two, right on the boundary of Blue Mountains and Gray Highlands. And the trails really are possible because of all the public lands in the area. The trails are managed for cross-country skiing in the winter and walking and mountain biking in the summer. The trails are open to the public with no user fees. The origin of the trails goes back to 1973, when they were built by members of the University of Toronto Outing Club to provide opportunities for cross-country skiing. This 1973 map of the trail system shows again, sort of in the lower right-hand corner, the county forest portion of the trail system, which are the series of little loops down there. So the county forest has been part of our trail system for just over 50 years now. That, the county forest tract there is 300 acres and has about six kilometers of trails. And the trails in the area are largely unchanged since 1973, although they're now connected to the remainder of the system. If you look at the map, you can see it was a little island off on its own at that time. The trails in the beginning were very rustic, with lots of manual labor, hand saws, hand brush cutting. We were grateful for mechanization on some of those things. And just for your information, that cabin on the lower left corner is the University of Toronto Outing Club cabin where the system started. However, that's what, how the trail started in 1973, but things changed fairly quickly. The area, you know, it was university students who started, but they became popular with local residents and visitors to the area. Over time, management gradually shifted to local volunteers. And by 2012, the association was incorporated to manage the trails. Here you see photos of an annual meeting and some of the meetings we've had to discuss trail priorities, trying to get broad community input into our management. The association pays for the materials for bridge and boardwalk construction, other maintenance, insurance, snow plowing, toilet rental. The association organizes land use agreements with each of the landowner agencies. Costs are primarily covered by voluntary memberships in our association and donations. As I said, we do not charge user fees for the trails, and we do not receive any government funding, funding on an ongoing basis. When we started the trails, they were intended strictly for cross-country skiing. That has continued to be the winter focus, but the trails are now very popular in the summer for hiking and mountain biking. And over time, the trails really have introduced so many users to the natural value and beauty of the Colapore upland area. It really is one of the gems of Gray County. You know, as part of the 50th anniversary celebrations, we ran a series of walks that focused on birds, forests, ecology, geology, and we hope to continue those types of educational activities in the future. Thank you, Bruce. I'm going backwards. Yeah, there we go. All right. Though only about six kilometers of the 50-kilometer network is the county forest part of our trail system, it plays a very special role because it is mainly on old forest lanes on gently rolling terrain. It provides easy trails that are popular for less experienced or, shall we say, less energetic skiers, bikers, hikers, and families. We are trying to make the trails even more user-friendly by removing selected rocks. This is also, this also helps make the trails better for skiing in low-snow conditions, something that is likely to become more common over time. We are also working to minimize environmental impact in damp areas through trail armory. The Colapore Trails are maintained, as Bruce has mentioned, by volunteers who blaze, prune, brush cut, maintain signs, pick up garbage, provide overall monitoring, and raise the funds required to do this work. When we started, the trails were rather rustic, as Bruce has mentioned. But since then, we have worked very hard to improve the standards so that we can provide a safe, enjoyable trail system that is to an international standard. In recent years, we've also become increasingly conscious of the environmental values of the area. These photos show our volunteers tree planting just next to the county forest property on old field that was not reforesting naturally due to soil compaction. Our volunteers have also been doing work managing invasive species. For example, we have been pulling garlic mustard in the county forest for a number of years, and we'll be out again in a few weeks if anybody wants to join us on that. When the trails first started, we interacted mostly with the Ministry of Natural Resources, but more recently, for the county forest section, we have been working with county staff with assistance of Conservation Authority. We would very much like to thank the county for the constructing the formal parking lot in 2022 at the south end of the trail system, along with providing winter snow plowing. This has substantially increased use of the area in both winter and summer. As an example of the collaboration and the collaborative relationship, last year, county staff produced signs with maps for posting on every trail intersection in the county forest tract, and our volunteers installed all of the signage in the area. Why do we do it? Well, this is why. The Colapore area provides an extraordinary opportunity, both for ourselves to experience the outdoors, but for the children in the community. One of our current priorities is fostering the next generation of trail users, who will hopefully will also become the next generation of volunteers. You'll notice the picture in the middle there. That's among other programs we've offered. We recently ran an orienteering event for young people and children so they could learn how to find their way in the woods without the use of a cellphone. So on behalf of the Colapore Trail volunteers, we would like to thank county for its contribution to recreation and environmental protection in Colapore. These types of facilities serve local residents and also draw visitors to the area. Just as an example, it's one of the key reasons that my wife and I moved to this area and raised our family here and run our business here. We encourage the county to continue to provide the necessary resources to support the effective management of the county forest system, and we are your partners in this work, and we look forward to many more years of dialogue and collabora, collaboration. I believe you've received the 50th anniversary publication in your packages. We also have hard copies and maps if anybody would like one. And just, just two other things. If I have a moment more off, slightly off-script, an invitation is open. If anybody would like to come and experience the Colapore Forest, winter or summer, we're there to, to to lead you there. And though Bruce hates me saying this, I just want to take a quick moment on the record to recognize Bruce King. He has been a steward of the Colapore Trails and the trail system, including the Bruce Trail, in, in this region for over 50 years. And we are super lucky to have people like Bruce who care deeply about the land that we live on. So thank you all very much, and look forward to any questions.
Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and it does indeed sound like it's a very collaborative partnership. And we do appreciate, everyone appreciates the efforts that you and your members put into maintaining that trail system. Yeah, it really is heartening to see organizations like that that are focused on bringing the youth forward and making sure they're aware of what's going on around them without a cellphone in their hand. Any questions for the delegation? Well, again, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. Sorry. What? Oh, Scott. Yeah, you want to say something, Scott? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just like to echo the warden's sentiments on behalf of staff. It's been great working with the Colapore Wilderness Trails Association, both within the county forest and as part of the larger participation, their participation in the county's outdoor management group, which started largely when we saw the rush of people to our natural areas during the COVID-19 pandemic, and they've just been fantastic to work with. And their efforts to maintain the trails and to promote this part of Gray County has been exemplary. So thank you very much on behalf of staff.
Thanks, Scott. Well said. Thanks again, gentlemen. Okay, our next delegation, we have Peter Dunbar. Peter or Doug? Peter, Peter, we have Peter. He's here to talk about road safety at Highway Four and side road 35 in Gray Highlands. So welcome, Peter. Floor is yours, sir.
Mr. Warden, council members and staff, good morning. And I already feel blessed that the first two topics were the environment and trails. What a great way to administrate your end of the business. It's stuff I worked on for 50 years also, and Bruce was a leader way ago. You hate to talk about that because it makes you sound really old, but he is, but he's done a great job. So Doug and myself lived in this area for 90% of our lives and are very familiar with this intersection. In my much younger days, I used to travel from Wasaga Beach across through there to play in Durham. And so I've seen many accidents at this inner crossing. It is a dangerous spot. The police will verify that there have been many accidents at this juncture. And I think there's a lot of reasons why it happens, and it's, they're all bad. But the one is coming from the south to the north approaching Highway Four. You come over a hill and you're immediately upon Highway Four. It's very quick, and right now, there's a large bush growing about a quarter mile or an eighth of a mile from the intersection. So you're blanked off and you can't see Highway Four well. So that bush needs to be taken out. It's called daylighting. It's the same thing you do on trails. You got to make the approach safer. The far side is okay. There's a church on the northeast corner. But what we've seen over these years is a lot of people either traveling too fast, not knowing where they're going. But the accidents at that corner have been substantial. So as good citizens, I think you have to participate in government and bring your issues forward and not just complain at the coffee shop. So here, Doug and I are presenting to you what we think needs to be done at that corner. So we submit the following issues for your consideration. Daylighting, number one, on the, coming to the approach on the south side, needs, the bush needs to be taken down. Number two, there needs to be larger advanced intersection signs. Number three, we need to go high-tech and get the stop sign to the large and solar panel style lit up ones so people are seeing this. Now, it's not just bad drivers. It's, you know, the cellphone and people are traveling up here as tourists. There's a lot of reasons why people aren't really concentrating on the map. The large stop sign with the solar panel, an additional rumble road acts or approaches would be beneficial. So there's three or four things that the Department of Public Works will know automatically how to improve this corner. So there, Doug is lucky to be alive. He was driving a fully loaded dump truck for Flecherton or FleshCon, and he was hit by a van doing in excess of 100 clicks. He, they tore up the van. The driver lived, but very lucky. Doug was hit as he was driving towards the west, and the dump truck was destroyed and put into the ditch and then into the field. The van ended up in the field. So the dramatic problem here is not the first one. It's happened before. The police, when we talked to them, said, yes, there's been lots of serious accidents this quarter. So our point would be is that this needs to be put into the Public Works Health and Safety Committee. I'm not sure if that's a nomenclature or not, but someone has to look at this and improve it before we lose some other citizens or tourists. So entertain any questions if they have any. It's pretty blunt and forward. Change the access, put up more warning signs, get a decent stop sign. Right now, it has a small little stop sign. I mean, that's common for a lot of places. This is a sort of shortcut for lots of people to get from A to B. So there's, there are speeding and the Google Maps nowadays, if you press on how to go from A to B, it doesn't take you the nicest way. It takes you the quickest way. This has become one of those quickest ways from A to B. So it needs some attention. Questions?
Thank you, Peter. I certainly appreciate your, your, your time and your effort to come and bring these things to our attention. Absolutely. And I'm sure Taps will make note of it. And are there any questions for Peter? No, it sounds like you've described it very well, Peter. Again, I appreciate your time and thank you very much for coming and sharing the information with us. You too. Thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that require further discussion? Counselor Greg.
Thank you, through you, Warden. The one item regarding ride sharing, just asked to have that pulled.
Okay, 6A. Anyone else? I'd entertain a motion to receive the balance of the consent agenda, Counselor Mackey and Counselor Carlton. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. We will come back to that 6A later in the meeting, of course. Items for direction and discussion. The first is 7A. Climate change initiatives update. Rebecca Denard will be giving this report. Can I have a mover to put this on the floor? Counselor Pringle, Counselor McKay. Rebecca, welcome.
Thank you. I've got the mic this time. There we go. It should be getting some slides up in a minute. We have the slide. Oh, there we go. Perfect. There we go. Okay. Thank you very much for having me here today, Warden and council. I've got a few projects that the climate change team has been working on, and just giving you some updates about those, about those projects. So I've got a number of topics to cover today, and I thought we'd pause between each one so that you can ask any questions or make any comments before we move on to the next topic. So starting off is our, our green development standards. As you know, we've been working with the counties of Dufford and Wellington to create green development standards, a tri-county approach to that project. And the idea is that we want to reduce the effort of having each county or each lower-tier municipality create their own standards, which would, you know, be a lot of effort and you'd make things more difficult for the development industry trying to negotiate their way through many different sort of policies and programs. So we're looking to create a standard approach that will, that will work for everybody. Just to refresh on what are green development standards, there are a set of principles that guide sustainable development of communities in an established area. They have criteria that incorporate, it can be incorporated into local development proposals. And green development standards can be considered at various levels of, of the development process. So at the building level, there's, we can think about things like energy efficiency measures, sustainable building materials at the site plan level. It's things like stormwater infiltration, native and drought-resistant plants. And then even at the neighborhood level, sod walks, crosswalks, and other infrastructure that would support blockable and extra transportation in the community. So just a little update on where we're at with the project. We're wrapping up this visioning and learning part of the project. So we have held public meetings in Duffren and in Wellington. The ones in Gray are coming up next week. We've also held information sessions for municipal staff at all of, all of the member municipalities. So we had one in each of the counties for municipal staff. And just yesterday, we held an industry and developer session to just to get them on up to speed about what the project is and the goals and what we're planning to do. So very shortly, we'll be moving on to the next phase of the project where we're really looking for input from all of these groups to tell us sort of what, what kind of things that they want to see in the development standards, asking those pointed questions really to solicit the feedback from those stakeholders about what they, what they want to see going forward. We're also in the process of engaging indigenous communities, asking them what, how, and if they want to be consulted on this and sort of arranging individual processes with them to align with sort of their standard procedures on consultations. So once we've gathered all this input, we'll be drafting the standards probably over the summer, and then we'll be bringing back an initial draft to, but first to those stakeholder groups so that they can provide input and see if their, their input is reflected in what we come up with. And then that will get further refined through, through additional consultations with staff and with senior management, and eventually we'll get back to presenting it all to you once everybody else has had a, had a good look at it. So throughout this process, we're really taking a balanced approach. So see, there's some of the things that we're, we're trying to sort of create the right, the right balance of. So probably some of these standards will be mandatory and some aspects will be voluntary, which what is mandatory, what is voluntary, that is something we're looking to get input in from stakeholders. We also recognize that there may be communities that have different needs and priorities. So much as we would love to have sort of exactly the same thing in absolutely every place, we realize that maybe some needs, or there may be more beneficial to customize some aspects of the standards to meet individual community needs. Similarly, the idea of having simple standards where it's again, sort of one path forwards would be simple. But we also recognize that if we could provide some options, that will provide some flexibility to people, but we would be introducing a little bit of complexity there because then we have sort of different paths to achieve the same kind of goals. We can look at a prescriptive approach to standards, so that's sort of dictating exactly what the bill needs to have versus a performance-based, looking at more like the targets that it needs to achieve. So both of those approaches are under consideration. And then finally, a tier-based approach. This is similar to how the building code works and that we have sort of a stepwise progression that we're looking to put some predictability into sort of what's coming next. And then there's also some points-based systems where you sort of put out a lot of things that could, could be good and sort of ask people to pick and choose which ones are going to get, that they want to, that they want to include. And those can also be sort of a hybrid of those two, where you have some tiers, and then you ask people to add a few extra points on top of their, of their tier to, to, to go forward. So this is, we're early stages. We're still, you know, we're at the beginning of the listening process. So once we've really heard from people, we'll be able to have a really better idea of where we're going to land on some of these, on these balancing questions. And then just an update on the Codes Acceleration Fund. I did report on this in January. At that point, we were seeking approval to enter into agreement with EnterCAN to receive this funding. We have now finalized that agreement. So this contribution will really help us. You can sort of see some of the outline points here, but the main advantage I see of this is that we will have funding extended to March of 2027, and this will allow us to hire a staff person. Once we have the standards drafted and everybody thinks it's a good idea, then we, how do we put this in place? So we'll have a support person that will be in charge of that process and be able to work through some of the growing pains and be the point person for that project. And so that we can get it facilitated implementation and really get, get this sort of just built into everybody's normal, normal course of events. We also get some, some recognition events, so being able to celebrate the businesses and developers who really do a great job with this is another aspect of that funding. That's, that's pretty exciting. And that, I think, yeah, that's, that's my what I got to say about that one. So if there's, I just pause if there's anything anybody would like to ask or comment on in the green development standards.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is there any questions? Are there any questions on that particular part? Counselor Mattressoff, please.
Thank you through you, the warden. So I understand from that layout that the, that the development community, the construction community will have their chance in this next phase to provide input on what's, what's doable and which ones will be in the voluntary versus the mandatory bucket. The question I have is, is what's the thought process in terms of educating, creating awareness about the options of when it comes to the voluntary choices that homeowners make when they're doing additions or building? So that they know what to ask the construction community. They know what to ask their general contractors about. What's the, how can we benefit from this, this process to make sure that we're reaching the people that might have to make decisions? And maybe that contractor hasn't thought of it or isn't maybe an advocate of it, but, but we, the homeowner needs to ask the questions.
Okay, thanks. That's a great question. So the green development standards, really the principal place that those are applied are through site plan approvals. So if you're doing just a renovation, the green development standards would not be enforced on those folks, but there are pathways to do this. We would certainly be providing some education so that everything would be voluntary, right? would not be enforced on those folks. Uh, but there are pathways to do this. Uh, we would certainly be providing some education, uh, so that everything would be voluntary, right? So you can, um, have, apply standards voluntarily on those, those buildings that aren't, uh, don't require a site plan approval. Uh, the Entercan funding actually also provides a lot of training and education pieces as well as some talent and business attraction. So we're going to be working with the, you know, folks like partners at Georgian College and to really educate builders about what do you got to do to build net zero? What do we need to do? How do we develop skills for solar feasibility assessments? So we're bringing those people in to have that, those skills and really helping to upscale the, the current workforce here so that people know what they need to do. Uh, so that that developer would have the, the, the wherewithal to, to understand if a homeowner is asking for a net zero build, that they would, they would, you know, just put their net zero person on that build and the way they'd go, uh, rather than it sort of being like, oh my goodness, I don't know how to do this, uh, situation, a- as well as, you know, providing some education to, to homeowners about, about the benefits of, of, you know, what you can do to your home and, uh, you know, we're looking at lifecycle costs of, of a, of a home. So a home that is built to a higher standards is going to be more, more comfortable and more affordable to operate. So there is benefits to the homeowner and sort of pushing for those higher standards.
Thank you. Uh, through you, the warden, as a follow-up, um, that, that's very much of what I, I'm, I'm hoping to hear because the number of it, 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 the, the focus on making sure that what comes forward in the process of site plan development, et cetera. It's great. That, that's a big brush to paint, but all of the smaller ways in which this, this can benefit so many of our homes when they get into a retrofit perspective, just knowing what's out there and what we can actually make use of. It might just, it might sound like, well, that's just one little house, but that's one little house here, there, everywhere, and that starts to add up. So thank you.
See, Windgrove, you had a comment?
Thanks. And I just want to emphasize to all of you that the work that, uh, Rebecca and others are, are doing to, uh, it through these consultations, I think is going to be very, very useful and valuable information to come back to, to this council. What we're hearing, like so many of these kinds of projects where the devil is in the details. And there are a lot of players. The system is complex and there are, you know, organizations and, and entities in that whole development process that, um, are at various stages of readiness to make the kind of changes that will be required to really get to where we want to go. And I think it's really important for council to hear that information and to understand what some of the challenges and roadblocks are right now. Maybe these become places for advocacy, or maybe it's just good to be aware of what's happening out there. So, you know, when you wonder why things don't happen as quickly as they might, we can all understand where some of those challenges are and what the timelines are likely to be for those challenges to be addressed. So all that to say, the consultation part has been very interesting so far and I'm really looking forward to the rest of the information that comes out of those discussions. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Greg.
Uh, I was just somewhat related to that then when we're consulting, um, and I'm not sure if we have the courage to go there or not. But are we marrying any consideration of the general home size? If we're going to talk about new builds only and not renovations, and we examine the landscape in today's realm, which is people building thirty eight hundred or forty five hundred square foot homes as opposed to eleven hundred square foot homes, which have a much significantly less, um, carbon uh, emission and footprint as opposed to these Goliaths that are continuing to get built across the landscape. Uh, they're more expensive to heat. They come on larger property sizes. They consume more of the lot size than perhaps the smaller ones. Uh, have, have, are you considering any of that in your engagement or? I mean, some of it might be zoning, uh, but if we're going to talk about green, uh, being green, are we going to get real serious? Because are we going to penalize the excessive consumption and size and scale that a lot of people are building a home for to maybe live half a year in it? Uh, or to service, uh, two retired individuals as opposed to, uh, forty, fifty years ago when these homes were, uh, you know, facilitating a family size of five, six, seven or eight people in a much smaller home. So, uh, I'm just wondering how is that getting, uh, considered as part of this whole process?
Yes, I, I would say like any, any and everything is, is currently on the table up for discussion and, and home size has come up, uh, in our, in our conversations. Uh, it's, it's a bit tricky again because of the, uh, the site plan situation. If it's less than ten units, it doesn't have to go through site plan currently. So if we're just doing one ginormous home, it doesn't go through the same regulatory process as a development with forty sort of normal sized homes. Uh, so we're sort of trying to figure out where the mechanism of when, how could we, you know, put the green development standards in effect on, on one of these sort of single builds, large, uh, large bills and how, how that would sort of intersect with, with the, with the permitting process. Uh, again, not wanting to hold up things unnecessarily with red tape and kind of just delay everything um, unnecessarily, but again, being able to address the, some of these issues that are on these sort of really, really out there, uh, huge, huge individual houses.
Anyone else on this one particular? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you. Good morning, County Council. Rebecca, I'm just wondering where affordability is going to enter into the, uh, the balance in the equation. You talked about some of the mandatory things. So I mean, stick frame housing right now is about four hundred dollars a square foot. So, you know, a modest home, a thousand square foot home, by the time you buy a lot, you know, you're up over five or six hundred thousand dollars for an entry house. Uh, will we get information back on what some of the mandatory requirements will add to that, uh, four hundred dollars a square foot for consideration?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, affordability is, is top of mind for this project. And, uh, we certainly wouldn't want to be putting anything in the mandatory category that was going to be, impose a significant burden on, on the homeowners, on citizens. Uh, at the same time, I think we need to consider the lifecycle costs of a home. If it costs a small amount more upfront, that may be offset by the, the operating costs being significantly lower. So if the energy bills, the, the ongoing upkeep are, are less, then it may be worthwhile to put that initial investment in. Um, also that it's way more efficient to put those measures in at the beginning rather than, uh, having to retrofit a house to, to sort of bring it up to potentially where we see the building code going in the future. So we're trying to get ahead of it and getting things that would, um, build in, you know, build in a good, a good structure to begin with, rather than sort of trying to fix it afterwards.
Counselor Decker.
Thank you, Morgan Milton. Thank you, Rebecca. Um, looking at similar to Counselor Mackey's, uh, concerns with the mandatory side of things. How much input has the building community had in this, uh? Because Gray County tends to have a lot of smaller builders who do not necessarily represented by an association or something of that nature. And, uh, when I look at mandatory requirements, it concerns me that, you know, we're going to go above and beyond the building code. How do we compete with neighboring, uh, municipalities? Um, I, when I first started reading about this, I thought it was going to be more in the lines of the R two thousand program. I'm going back quite a few years here, but it was, uh, you know, they had the great suggestions and builders could choose to build to that standard, but it wasn't mandatory. So, uh, you know, you get the concerns with how do we educate our building official staff in our local communities? Does this take the ability of our local community? Does, does it take the, uh, opportunity for our local communities to, to have their own set of standards type of things? So that was, was where my concerns lie.
Uh, yeah, so a few, few points in there. Uh, firstly, yes, we absolutely are consulting with, with the development community. We just did our first information session for them, uh, yesterday. There were about forty, forty-five, uh, individuals in attendance to that. And that was our opportunity to tell them about the project, getting their heads around what it is we're trying to do. Um, the next step will be to schedule some feedback sessions for them to participate in. So we will be asking those, those types of questions about what they think, uh, is feasible, what they think is desirable for this community. Uh, we could put, we are also considering doing some smaller focus groups. If we find that we're not in those larger sort of sessions, we're not reaching the people we need to reach or not hearing enough, then we, we were considering doing some focus groups with some, some individuals uh, to really get their feedback. Uh, the question about going above building code is certainly not, uh, something we would take lightly and, and we are still working out where, where that might land. The, the thing that we're, we're trying to, uh, communicate at this point is that there's a lot more to green development standards that are not covered in the building code. Cause the building code is really just about the building, whereas green development standards covers that lot level, the neighborhood level. These things that are not included in the building code, which, you know, we may consider doing some mandatory things around things that are not mandatory. Cause the building code just doesn't even cover things like the length of a block or whether it needs sidewalks or, um, you know, whether it should be cited in a biodi- like a, a high biodiversity zone. Like there's a lot of different things that can, that can come into green development standards that just aren't even addressed in, in the building code. So, yeah, we're just trying to balance it out and nothing has been decided at this point. Uh, we haven't, um, we're waiting to hear from people before we pick what, what our suggestion is for what's mandatory and what is not.
I think, uh, the overriding, uh, and I'll come to you, Counselor DeBreen, the overriding message here, I think, is that we're in very early days and there's a lot of consulting and a lot of questions and answers that need to be had before we put anything to paper, uh, with the stamp done. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, Rebecca. Uh, just listening to some of these ideas and while we are in that consultation phase and trying to develop a plan forward, talking about those, those houses that were the Goliath homes that we don't have site plan control over, uh, if it's less than ten units. But partnering with the development community, the building departments of the municipalities to perhaps develop a pamphlet of, okay, you're going to build this thirty eight hundred square foot home on a two acre lot. Have you considered incorporating some voluntary green standards? And here are some ideas that could help make your home more efficient. If they can build a thirty eight hun- they can afford a thirty eight hundred dollar build, thirty eight hundred square foot build, I think they can incorporate and afford a few green, green options. So just something to keep in mind that how we can work together and share the information once you've established some options. Thank you.
All good points. Let's move on to the experimental acres.
There we go. Uh, yeah, changing, changing boxes here. So, uh, this is a, a program that we're working with farmers to test and support new, uh, experimental practices that would help with soil house, uh, that soil help and carbon capture on farms. So this was a pilot that was developed by Guelph and Wellington, uh, through the Our Food Futures Program. Um, Wellington facilitated the program in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, uh, and Gray participated, uh, in, has participated in one year of this program. Uh, now the, our food, food futures funding is now, uh, finished. So we, uh, decided to take on the program ourselves and we are working with Gray Agricultural Services to deliver the program. Uh, and this program includes financial support of up to three thousand dollars per farm, plus some soil testing and networking opportunities. Uh, and this program is really one of the only things we're doing at the moment to support the capacity building in sustainable agriculture, which is identified as one of the pillars of our climate action plan. So, uh, the application intake was, uh, during the month of February, it was promoted to farmers through postings on the website, social media, and at Gray Bruce Farmers Week. Uh, the applications were evaluated and honest smoothly using a scoring matrix by Gray I staff as well as Gray County staff. We received eighteen applications and we selected six, uh, for participation. So here are some, these are the, the, uh, the selected projects for this year. As you can see, there's a, a mix of geography. We've got, uh, farms in Chatsworth and in West Gray and, uh, Gray Highlands. Uh, we've got small farms. We've got large farms. We have a number of different types of, of projects, uh, interseeding, silvopasture, uh, some liquid manure application. Uh, and then there's one project that's, uh, just ongoing testing from, from last year, which is the bale grazing sheep, which we're just going to, uh, continue to test for, uh, the, the soil results on that one. Cause soil results take a long time to actually, to see a difference in the testing. So we're hoping to, to be able to show more of a trajectory with that ongoing, ongoing work on that one. Uh, yeah, so those are the, uh, orbs that we're doing and I, oh yeah. So next steps, uh, we're going to be having some initial meetings with each of the participants just to confirm the details of their project where, with a site and just finalizing agreements with each farmer. And then over the season, uh, the Greg services staff will be conducting meetings and farm visits with the, with the, uh, with the farmers, uh, doing those testings, getting, uh, some insights onto how, how are things going, uh, sort of that running the experiment part of the experimental acres. Uh, and then at the end, um, we'll be profiling these pictures. We'll be getting the results. We'll be sharing them out. Uh, the idea is that if, if they, we get a farm to test something, this is a, hopefully will be an inspiration for other farmers to employ some of the similar practices with, they see their neighbors doing this successfully in the, in a a local way. Uh, that's what farmers sort of need to sort of take the plunge and try something new. So the idea is we start small and then hopefully some of these practices will kind of move more into the mainstream of, uh, of agricultural practice, uh, in our community. So that's, uh, that's that one.
Any questions on that one? Always fun to look over the fence and see what the neighbor's doing without letting the neighbor know that you're actually looking over the fence. Don't see any questions on that one. So let's move on to the, uh, Community Outreach and Engagement Program.
That's okay. Sorry, I almost forgot. Yeah. Oh, good. Uh, yes. So, uh, this, uh, as the warden mentioned, we have an outreach and engagement program, uh, related to our climate adaptation plan. So developing a climate adaptation plan was identified as one of the next steps of going green and gray. Uh, the current plan we have is largely focused on, uh, climate mitigation. So this is to slow the progress of climate change by reducing our emissions and sequestering carbon. A climate adaptation plan, which we don't yet have, is outlines how the community is going to respond to the impacts of climate change that are already baked in. So these are things that we know based on emissions that have already happened. These are going to be how we predict our community's going to change and we would like to have a plan to, to address those. So it could include things like, uh, uh, local climate models, risk and vulnerability assessments uh, and actions that we could take as a community to, uh, negate the negative impacts of, of climate change. Uh, we are planning to work with this, uh, milestone process. It was created by Ickley Canada, who also worked on our, our climate mitigation plan. It's called the Building Adaptive and Resilient Communities Milestone Process. And this has been used by over a hundred and twenty other municipalities. So it's, uh, tried and tested. Uh, I know the text is extra small there, but you, you have it in, in your report, but basically we take, uh, you know, we initiate a plan, we do some research, we make a plan, implement the plan, and then we monitor and review and make sure that, uh, everything's going um, according to the plan. So we have an opportunity to work with the Ontario Resource Centre for Climate Adaptation, which is a project of Ickley Canada. They recently launched a Community Outreach and Engagement Program, which provides cohort style learning and capacity support for Ontario municipalities uh, who are working on climate adaptation focused engagement. Uh, and that first milestone of the BARK process is really about engaging stakeholders and really gaining an understanding of, of what, uh, who's, who are the players at the table? So that's how we're going to be using this, this, uh, this project. So over the course of one year, uh, roughly from March, uh, of this year to February of next year, we are going to be receiving support from Orca team members. This includes capacity building, subject manager experts, workshops and lecture style presentations, tools and resources, connections and networking. Uh, and there's no monetary, uh, cost associated in this program. We, we applied and we were accepted and we get to do this. Um, that, you know, as a, as a free exchange of, uh, of resources. So our, our adaptation initiative, uh, we're going to be engaging, uh, with our key audiences. That's, will include certainly staff at, at member municipalities, conservation authorities, public health, uh, indigenous communities, the agricultural community, uh, and various community groups, uh, and youth groups that would have a stake in, in our kind of adaptation planning. Uh, also this work will involve assembling existing research data and plans because we have done work that is adjacent to this work. We have an emergency management plan. Conservation areas have done a lot of, uh, work on flood, flooding mapping and, but we need to, we need to find out what's out there. What are the gaps? How do we pull this all together into an adaptation plan? Uh, we're also be preparing an application for FCM's Local Leadership for Climate Adaptation. This funding program is supposed to launch in, uh, in the spring of this year, uh, and we will, we'll be Uh, and we will, we'll be putting in an application. Uh, and we have matching funds already allocated in in the budget so that we can uh put forward an application for this for this program. We'll also be uh hosting some stakeholder workshops. Uh, and this this work roughly corresponds to beginning of milestone one up to the beginning of of milestone three, where we sort of are setting a vision and goals uh of the plan. Uh, as we finish this BARK process of this ORCA process the year the year long. And uh, we anticipate completing the Q uh Community Climate Adaptation Plan either late twenty twenty five or early twenty twenty six. And uh, certainly if we are successful with our FCM applications, will allow us to uh increase the scope and deliver more quickly on that on that adaptation plan if we get uh additional resources to do it. Uh, so that's uh, that's that one. Any any thoughts or questions on that one? Okay, carrying on. Uh, Green Economy Hub. So this is a uh, this is a project that's been circulating in the community for for quite a while. Maybe I'll just go back and uh give some basics about what is a green economy hub. So green economy hubs are organizations that are supported by an organization called Green Economy Canada. And they engage local businesses in taking climate action. They use a cohort report cohort approach to work with local business to set and achieve sustainability targets. They bring together, support and celebrate businesses as they achieve those goals. Uh, hubs have a very difference, uh, there's some different organizational principles, but they have some some core approaches. They're community-led, business-focused, revenue generating and target-driven. They're usually operated by a local environmental nonprofit who would provide services for a fee to the local business community. Uh, but there are other uh operation models as well that uh have been used. The services are really geared for small mediums enterprises who don't have, usually don't have sustainability experts on staff. But have a strong business case for sustainability within their operations. Uh, Green Economy Hub really can strengthen the local green economy by providing education and creating demand for sustainable goods and services. Uh, there are currently eight hubs in Canada, six of which are in Ontario. And Gray Bruce is the only region in southern Ontario that is not currently covered by uh serviced by a local hub. So there has been a local local working group who's been uh addressing this 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 issue. They've uh been talking about this since uh tw- twenty twenty one. Uh, and then the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay hosted an event uh in twenty twenty three. Uh, called Achieving Sustainability Through the Greener Economy. And following this uh, a working group was formed. It includes uh representatives from Gray County, which is me, uh, the town of Blue Mountains, town of Collingwood, Institute for Southern Georgian Bay, RTO seven, the Blue Mountain Resort, McLean Engineering. Uh, Climate Action Now, Georgian Bay Forever, Wasama- Wasaga Climate Action Team and the Collingwood Climate Action Team. So there's quite a cross um sectoral support on this. Uh, we've got municipalities, nonprofits, uh, business organizations, as well as uh actual businesses on on this committee. So the next step for this group is to seek some broader engagement from the business community to better understand their needs for sustainability. Uh, they're hosting a sustainability summit at the town of Blue Mountains on April twenty fifth. And this is an opportunity, we're going to uh have a business audience. And Green Academy will, Canada will present, uh, and we will engage with those businesses in some facilitated discussion to gauge their interest and their their needs for uh sustainability services. Uh, so one potential uh future pilot initiative for this for this project is to have a pilot uh cohort of local businesses that would join the national hub. So the Green Economy Canada currently has a hub that uh any business in Canada can join. If they, if there isn't a local hub, they can join this national hub. Uh, this would allow the businesses locally to immediately start their sustainability journey with services delivered by Green Economy Canada. While enjoying the benefits of a local network. So the so there would be some local events and and local specific things that would happen in the community. But some of the services would also be delivered naturally. And this would lay the groundwork for a local hub to fully launch uh in this in this area. If this pilot is successful, it would lay the groundwork for for a fully fledged uh local hub. So what's what's our role in all this? Uh, the Green Economy Hub is a a community-led initiative. So the recommendation is that we continue to participate in this working group, uh, attend, uh, assisting with convening and facilitating meetings of stakeholders to understand the feasibility and potential of this project. Uh, we'll continue to outreach and engage with colleagues to inform them about the Green Economy Hub. And through our Economic Development Department, uh, reach out to businesses to understand their needs for sustainability and the potential they see. Uh, if they're potentially interested in joining this hub and uh and moving this forward. Uh, and just on a personal note, I I'm excited to be presenting about this because prior to my role here, uh, I ran the Green Economy Hub in Sudbury. So I have some really direct personal experience about this. So if uh there's any sort of questions, I have uh possibly a little more background knowledge than than the average on the on this particular project. So uh, happy to share it with you today. And that's uh, that's that one.
Any questions on that particular one? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Warden. Rebecca, help me understand, I think I heard you say there are six hubs in Ontario? And Gray and Bruce is the only area not served, so those other six hubs must be have a big geographic area.
There we go. Yes, so uh, the uh, it's really in um nor- in southern Ontario. So there's a Green Economy North, which is the one I ran in Sudbury. It serves all of northeastern Ontario. The part that's missing, the the big chunk around Thunder Bay, is currently not yet served by a hub. So anything sort of west of Souse Marie in the north um area is currently not served. Uh, but the sort of anything from, you know, Perry Sound South is covered by by one of the hubs. And they have rather large uh geographies. And the the idea behind that was that they started really as community-based uh organizations. But then there was demand for someone who's sort of just across the border and they wanted to participate. And uh, at first, the answer was like, no, this is only for people in Waterloo region or only for people in the city of London. And then somebody else would say, well, I really want to do this, where can I go? So the answer to that was to firstly expand the geography of those local hubs to try and cover off more of the province. And to launch this national hub for people, say, in Winnipeg or Halifax or Saskatoon, who really wouldn't have wouldn't make sense for any of those to be served by a local hub. So they're, yeah, they're just sort of bringing bringing the, trying to get the coverage um in the area.
Thanks, Mr. Ward. So help me understand why we would need to create one here if we couldn't just expand the border of one to this, you know, for southwestern Ontario, why couldn't southwestern Ontario have a hub so there's not duplication?
So we we think that there's a a uniqueness about our our area and a real sense of community in this in this area that that the other hubs are not necessarily well positioned to serve. Uh, probably the the bordering hubs, uh, there's one in uh York region that's run out of the Windfall Ecology Center. Uh, they're they're focused on sort of large urban centers. Uh, then to the south, there would be a hub out of Waterloo, uh, who are really sort of focused on that tech sector Waterloo region type um businesses. There's one in a Peterborough that may more align, but they're quite a bit further east than us. So we really see the potential of having something uh local. Because some part of this is a a local recognition and a local networking opportunities. So we would love to be able to connect the businesses of Gray Bruce and and that that sort of chunk of Simco that's uh this side of Barry. In in events and and ways to to come together. So if if we're trying to bring people together for a networking event. We we don't want to be sort of sending them all off to Waterloo or to London or to uh to York region to to do that. We really see the value of having that local, that local piece. And this is what sort of differentiates this program from some other programs that are more sector-based. This one is really focused on local and how can we, how can local businesses support and grow that green economy in the local, in the local context?
Just, you want to follow up? Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So in the report, we said Gray and Bruce. So has there been um conversations with Bruce County? Where do they sit on all this?
So the the players currently at the table are more centered around that southern Georgian Bay region, because that's where we've started the work. Uh, the the appro- and following this report, the outreach to to Bruce will will begin. I wanted to be able to bring this to to your attention before I'm kind of putting my staff time out there and and really starting to talk about it to colleagues uh in other in other places. So this is the, this is the sort of initiation point of that additional outreach. Uh, now, the thought for developing a hub, it really makes sense to start in sort of a center and then expand again. So we may, we may look at Bruce as like a phase two uh for really heavily promotions of this program. But that being said, if there was a business in, if we get a hub going and there's a business in Bruce that really wants in, absolutely, it would be most welcome to come in. But we need to sort of focus our communications and our efforts sort of uh in sort of an expanding circles. That's certainly what we did in in Sudbury. We started in Sudbury and expanded to Manitoulin and then to northeastern Ontario. So just because of the resources, um, this is generally run by a nonprofit who doesn't have the capacity to be everywhere at once, all the time.
Thanks, Rebecca. Counselor Greg, and then Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you and through you, Warden. Uh, I have some hesitancy on on the Green Economy Hub in that um, I'm a little concerned that this is originating from an outfit, not an outfit. There's not not-for-profits, there's lots of good organizations. And uh, sometimes they're predicated upon join our organization. I know I, there's a hyperlink in here for hotels. There are rooms one to ten, it costs you six hundred dollars to join, eleven to twenties, nine hundred, whatever. So when I look at this, I have to be convinced there's value that is and and definable or measurable outcomes. And it's not just joining an organization for X amount of dollars and there's going to be more networking and more um handshakes and slap on the backs and and saying how good you are doing. Because that's on the surface, that's what this really feels like. So I'm I'm interested in hearing what measurable outcomes came out of Sudbury. Because I I I'm hesitant to get too far outside here on everything we're doing into the community and not focusing on the county of Gray and our own corporate in in uh footprint. Um, a lot of these items, and and we'll go back to farming, farming, I think, is a perfect example and the sustainable agricultural. But are we realizing the advances that probably the Warden with his equipment in today's realm from forty years ago, when the farmer would go over the field with a a ten-foot uh, you know, plow it, you disc it, you cultivate it, you cultivate it, you plant it, you harrow it. And now you look at the advances that John Deere and Case have made. So it's big money, it's corporations that drive the advances, and the green economy is advancing, whether we know it or not. So um, I just wonder, like, how involved are we with just the networking and not actually realizing that big corporations are actually making significant impacts? Um, and we're wandering into something here that we don't have the resources or the ability to achieve.
I think if we go, if we go back to the the content of the report. And I think the important point to remember here is that the Green Economy Hub is a community-led initiative. And this is part of our, this work is part of the Climate Change Action Plan that this council adopted. It's one small part of it. Um, staff's role here is one about facilitation and raising awareness and providing assistance where that assistance is is needed and welcomed. Uh, I don't think there's anything here that we're we're trying to um force any anything on anyone. Um, but Rebecca, you can.
Sure, yes, happy to, happy to think about that. So the county's role is that networker and convener of 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 the network, just to spread the word. But the actual hub itself has very concrete deliverables and targets. Every business that joined makes a GHG inventory, they make an action plan, they set a public target that they're looking to achieve. Uh, so there's, and that's reported on on an annual basis. So it it doesn't fall into that greenwashing category where they say they're doing all kinds of green stuff. And we don't actually see any evidence that that is actually happening. And it it can provide, the the businesses do it because there's a business case for it. And that can be in the term in in terms of uh energy savings by making their business more efficient. Uh, employee engagement, everybody wants to work for somebody who's doing their part, has that ESG framework lens to their operations. Uh, the value of a green brand. So so the consumer can see that this business that I'm supporting is is aligned with my values. So that's the, that's the reason a business joins. They don't join unless they have that kind of business case for for why they're spending money and resources to do this. And our role is really just to present this as an option to businesses. If you, if this seems like something that you would be interested, that you would find beneficial to your operations. Here's an opportunity to join some others and to learn about it and to to involve, uh, get involved with this local hub. And if it's not for you, you know, carry on, move on down the road, nobody's forcing anybody to be part of this.
Counselor Hutchison.
Uh, thank you, Rebecca. Maybe you've sort of answered some of this, but I'm just curious that in here, you talk about the um the hub has four approaches, community-led, business-focused, revenue generating and target-driven. I'm just wondering, you said you have experience from previous working with a hub. Can you give us an example of a a project that maybe would fit into this category and and that maybe had success? Thank you.
So just just to clarify, a project that a business has undertaken to as a member of the hub? Yes, okay. Yeah, so uh, we had a member, uh, they were a brewery on Manitoulin Island called Split Rail Brewing. And they were trying to figure out if they should continue to put their beer in bottles or put their beer in cans, which was more expensive, which was more GHG neutral, because on Manitoulin, they had to bring in a bottler. Uh, they had to so had like, they had to drive the equipment up the highway every time they wanted to bottle their beer. So that the the pros and cons of of doing that. And the the hub was able to help them work through that that problem, presenting the pros and cons and the the environmental impact of both of those scenarios. And it led them to make a switch in their operations. So now that they they now switched over to putting their beer in cans, which is more GHG effective, because they don't have to bring in their bottler. They were, they invested in a canner that they could have on site all the time, so they didn't have to bring in that equipment. And and it's actually cheaper and easier to ship cans than bottles because of the breakage. And the the weight of the shipping is also a a GHG factor in terms of how much uh emissions are caused by shipping this beer around here, there and everywhere. So that's just sort of an example, and they are very small operations, you know, they have four or five people. They don't have capacity for someone to do that kind of work. Uh, but as a member of the hub, we were able to sort of help them through that process.
Leave it to Wes Gray to get us talking about beer. All right, um, any last words, Rebecca, or is that it? I I think we've we've had a good discussion about this one. I know probably a couple people, uh, myself included, looking for a recess. So thank you, Rebecca, very much. A lot of information there, so we'll look forward to how things are going in the future. All right, thank you. All right, it's twenty after eleven, let's reset. Oh, yeah, we need to vote, sorry. All those in favor? That is carried, thank you very much. Uh, it's twenty after eleven, let's recess until eleven thirty. That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, it's 20 after 11. Let's recess until 11:30. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. First report now, or the next report rather, is a, uh, 2023 year-end transfers and Sue Murray is here to speak to this one. Someone care to move? This motion. Counselor Mackey and Counselor Deckard. Welcome Sue. The floor is yours.
Thank you and um, morning everyone. So currently we are just finalizing our 2023 year end. Our auditors are actually currently on site, just on the other side of that door over there. They'll be with us for a few weeks and then not anticipating any issues, but. It's that time of year for us. March is a very busy year for finance. So the report before you um is a report outlining the estimated surplus and deficits that we have within our departments for the year ending 2023. As I've mentioned, the auditors are next door and when they're done, we will be bringing back a full audited report and a presentation to the Budget and Finance Committee, expected to be in June. So overall, the Gray County is estimating that we will have just over a $1.8 million surplus for the year and it's. Sort of broken down within our port corporate functional areas that you see above you on the screen. Our Corporate Services is projecting a 784,300 surplus. Planning and Community Development, 77,000 surplus. Our Human Services Department, 653,500 and our Transportation Services has 288,000. To put that 1.8 million into perspective, it represents about a 2.35% of our current levy dollars for 2023. And if you compare it to our actual budgeted expenses of 225 million, it's about 1.8% of our budgeted overall expenses. If council will recall back in 2021, staff determined that it was advantageous to pay off the balance of the Golden Town Mortgage. And at this time, we have a balance of 887,559.57. Which is currently shown as unfinanced on our balance sheet. The intent in 2020 town was 2021 was to repay ourselves over a period of time and reduce borrowing costs. Based on the surplus we have this year, staff are recommending that this amount be repaid using funds that have been transferred to the one-time funding reserve. If this transfer is done, it will leave us with just over $4.5 million in our one-time uh funding reserve. Based on the reserve policy that you have attached on the report, we have sort of set out in that policy, a minimum, maximum and a target balance in that reserve. Which is based on certain percentages of our levy. Once that. Um, 887,000, it will be withdrawn from the reserve. It leaves us with just a little over 4.5 million. And that 4.5 million actually just shy of our target balance. It's about 221,000 less than our target balance. So that leaves us in good shape going forward for our next budget years. So you will see in the chart, sort of in the, in the report that shows where we. Um, based on these four areas where the reserves, um, which sort of deeper functional departments and where the reserve transfers will be going. Um, in columns three and four, um, the, the, the last column is the amount. That of the projected surplus or deficit. And then second column is sort of which reserve. And which area has sort of originated this surplus or deficit amount. So for example, in our corporate service area, I did mention that we had a 784,300 surplus. Overall, um, we're recommending that 20,000 go to a finance reserve. If council will recollect when our budget discussions, we had hoped to put $20,000 in a finance reserve and we. Removed that transfer in our budgets. So we're, we said we would try to put it in with surplus this year. So that's why you see the 20,000. Um, there was some overall corporate services when that are admin. Base and our property budgets and our supplemental taxes and write-offs, uh, were 529,000. You will see that there is um more detail within our, our written narrative. So I'm just gonna try to highlight. Quickly sort of the main. Uh, drivers for either surpluses or deficits. Within our admin departments, which cover multiple departments, um, there is approximately $514,000. In surplus which is driving mainly between staffing vacancies. And just gapping throughout the year that naturally occurs. And you will actually see this as a theme, kind of that runs through some of our departments throughout the year. Budget best as we can. And as soon as you set the budget, life circumstances can change those very quickly. Council has approximately 38,700 in surplus dollars, um, mainly due to travel and meals being lower than expected. Our IS budget is, um, does have a deficit of about 127,000. Um, they did major make some decisions on Microsoft, Microsoft licensing. That put that budget over balance, but I will caveat that when the discussions were happening, we were well aware of the. Salary gappings that we knew that they also had in their IT budget, which falls under our administration line. So. It looks like it's over, but we knew that when it happened and decisions were made based on what was best for Gray County. Our property budget has a slight surplus of 68,000. Uh, mainly due to snow removal and utility savings in a year. Our POA department has a surplus of $191,000. Mainly due to um, expected ticket revenue being higher than expected. I do know there was one large ticket that was received that. Data back to the 1990s, but I don't have that exact amount on hand with me right now, but I know that was the driver of some of that. So. You just never know with your POA when the ticket revenue could come in, but there was a larger one than normal. Our subs and write-offs have a 529,800 surplus. This, this, these subs and write-offs can vary significantly from year to year. So we budget as best we can based on the knowledge we have, but. As you will see in your lower tiers, it can vary from year to year. Um, the health unit, we had a, a slight deficit there, 57,000. More of a timing difference when we set our budget and they set theirs. Our WSIB um, department has a deficit of 348,300. This just goes down to the number and duration of claims during the year. It's sort of similar to the subs and write-offs. Staff do their best every year based on historical and things happen throughout the year out of our control. Our weekly indemnity had a small surplus of 44,000 and we had some 66,000 uh deficit in some of our capital projects. Um, some of it was capital projects that were sort of carried forward and some dollars that. Sometimes you make those decisions and when you think projects will happen. So some of those expenses flowed more into this year than we. Thought because they didn't have to fall within the 2022 year end. And our planning and community development um, functional area, we are estimating a total uh surplus overall of 77,000. Um, civic addressing and agricultural and forestry and trails. They sort of fall under what we more call planning or group with planning. So they have a total surplus of 29,000. Um, civic addressing, the main differences there were less expenses on signages and purchase, purchase services. And agricultural, we had a $15,000 less than purchase service and other minor variances and expenses, but I will caveat as well that we do know there was about a $9,200. Of AP credits that related to a prior year that happened after the year end was finalized. So. Even though it looks larger, it's, it's a bit of a year-end. Mix and forestry and trails had a very minor um overage and one of their bridge and culvert works, 500. Eckdev and Tourism has an overall surplus of 48,000. Um, 42.5 is in the operating and there's a 5,500 surplus in the capital fund. Their, their operating um surplus mainly drives from salaries and benefits, about 37,000. Small surplus in the Sydney of 5,500, um, more rent. They were able to fill their rooms a little bit more and I think they had a little bit less on utilities. And their capital budget was just less on tourism signage than they expected. And Gray Roots overall didn't have a surplus or deficit, but it was a mix between operating and capital. They had staff vacancies in their operating fund that created about $40,000 surplus. But in their capital, they had the um, the roof, the flat roof replacement that went over budget. So together they netted to zero. And you were, uh, there was a report during the year on that flat roof replacement. Our Human Services, um, projected surplus and deficit overall is about 653,500. There's many departments within Human Services, so I'm gonna try to highlight this as best I can. So Social Services has a projected surplus of 57,300. Housing has a projected surplus of 32,900, and if I can combine all of the long-term care budgets, they had an overall surplus of 246,300, and our Paramedic Services has a projected deficit of 197,000. Within our Social Services brackets, we have two main budget areas. Our Ontario Works and Early Learning and Childhood. The Ontario Works, we have more staff vacancies in there, about 154, and there were just other just general savings on their training office supplies and Ontario Works Stability Program. In the Early Learning and Childhood budgets, there was 343,400 in surplus. Some of this arises from the early on budgets, about 128,900. And the remaining surplus was based on some traditional funding that they were able to use. And overall, within our housing portfolio, there was a $39,000 surplus, but it sort of has, this one has some larger swings of surpluses and deficits within their budgets. So in the Homelessness and Prevention Program, in the first three years of this year, which we're well aware of the the needs that we've had in, in this area, they had a deficit of 427,000 in the first three months of this year. Our admin and property budgets were in a deficit position of about 34,600. Mainly in building repairs and utilities were offset somewhat by savings and property taxes and tenant revenues. On the 14th Street Building was, didn't get to occupancy as early as we had anticipated, so there was a deficit there of 19,800. And nonprofit housing, we had a surplus of 332,900, mainly due to agreements and mortgages ending mid-year as well as excess subsidies being repaid by providers resulting from their annual information returns. And the nonprofit housing capital, we had a surplus of 181,400. Basically, we received some provincial funding during the year that was unexpected, and those were levy-funded projects. So that's what created that. And once, and then we'll switch, talk about our long-term care. Our long, overall, our long-term care has some small operating deficits, really hard to identify specific larger ones within their operating budgets. And their capital budgets are, are in a surplus position mainly because they received capital funding throughout the year that was not anticipated as well. And within our Paramedic Services budget, you do see 197,000 of deficit there. The bulk of that is gonna come from 132,000 in, in salaries and benefits over, mainly can be attributed to the training, increased training for new paramedics, so staff budget had budgeted based on two new hires in the year, and we actually had 22. So that, because they're a 24/7 operation, new staff, train, training and stuff. 10? Did I say 10 new hires? Two. And their vehicle ops, there was increases in, in the aging fleet, so they had its deficit of 39,200. And medical supplies, which I think you've heard about throughout the year, was in a deficit position of 92,200. But on the plus side, they did receive some additional revenues from the province and expected of about 80,000. And in our Transportation Department, you'll see that overall, they had a $288,000 surplus, of which there was deficit in the operating of 353,700 and, and capital surplus of 641,700. The operating deficit is mainly attributed to stock usage throughout the year, and we did staff had anticipated pulling in some money in reserves in the year, but knowing that they had some larger capital surpluses, they didn't bring that money in because we knew eventually it would all fall through into the, their general capital reserve. And there were two main projects within the capital that created that surplus, which was Gray Road 7 and and Gray Road 18 projects. And also, one other thing that we need to highlight within the Year and Transfers Report are the donations that we receive throughout the year. Need to go into their own special reserve in our transfers. So Gray Gables, Lee Manor, Rockwood Terrace, and Gray Roots all received donations this year. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Sue. Are there any questions? Councilor Gray.
Better ask a question. Thanks for the report, Sue. I've got three questions. How does 1.8 million compare to the surplus deficit of perhaps the last four or five years in just a general term? So I'm not worried about specifics to the dollar. Secondly, we do have a structured New Budget and Finance Committee now. So these reserve contributions that are recommended by staff, would they support the opportunity for subsequent reductions in the 25 budget preparation? Or are these reserve contributions largely going to reserves outside of our normalized budgetary reserve contributions, in which case the actual savings, the taxpayer's already paid for these, has already expended these funds? So I guess if there is some alignment to what we are normally placing to those reserves, there's opportunity for that future reduction from the obligation, and you, you know, you can't go wrong with contributing to the reserves. You can have too much in reserves and double tax essentially. But once they're in the reserve, sometimes they be, they can get easy to spend, or easier to spend. So I guess that's the second question. Third question is maybe 12 months ago, we had some opportunities from the county where we were trying to support housing initiatives. And I think the one federal program was the Housing Innovator Fund, and it didn't come through with the funding that we were hopeful of, so. I guess I'm wondering if staff considered, we know that housing is a priority in Gray County. It's a 1.8 million dollar fund. Was there consideration or should there be consideration to leveraging some of this 1.8 million dollars to finance and support needed housing that's within the county?
Thank you. Those are very good questions. I might need Mary Lou's help on the first one of prior years because I don't have that information on the tip of my head. I can answer the second one. So yeah. I, what we do is we look and hopefully when we get into the Budget and Finance Committee, we'll be able to show you more detail. Currently, right now, we look, I got staff looking at like a 10-year lens in our reserves, so. What's, what's the magic number we should be keeping in our reserves, which is why you'll see sometimes a constant transfer to reserve? And so every year, we look at that, what's the next 10 years gonna look like? Do we have enough? Based on what some reserves have very specific reserve, you know, targeted balances. So what does that look like in a 10 years? So yeah, it's not meant to just keep building, building. The reserves are there to help guide us in a future need so that we don't see highs and lows in our tax rates, more stabilizing it, so. Yeah, definitely, we definitely look at that, and I hope we can bring some of that actual 10-year lens to that committee anymore. Right now, it's, it's in a, not a pretty format, so. I would like to get that to that committee for sure because that is guides us in a lot of decisions, and I know Scott can relate to this because I helped him guide him through some planning due to staff vacancies we had in our department, so. Yeah, looking at that 10-year lens, like what do you need and how much do we need to keep putting towards those reserves? And every, because every year we get changes based on pricing, costing, sometimes we take projects off, the 10-year capital list are gone, or even just operating needs. So yeah, it's definitely not just meant to go in there and build forever, because that's not a good use of our taxpayers' dollars either. And the third one, I can't, I don't think, Anne Marie's. I think we might have to get back you on that third question because I don't particularly have that level of detail with me right now.
Thank you, Sue. Did Mary Lou, were you gonna speak to the first question? Or, sorry, I did, not trying to rush you, but.
I, I think it's probably easier if we circulate that information after the meeting. I was just doing a quick look, and I'd have to make sure that this ties to the financials. It shows that in 2022, our surplus was just shy of 1.6 million. And 2021, and that's as far as I managed to get, going back through showed 363,100. So I can provide that information, and we can circulate it after.
Okay, that would be appreciated. CIO Windgrove.
Thank you. You'll know even in this report, there are, you know, a significant amount half of, of what we're looking at here comes from either supplemental taxes or WSIB. And, and both of those things, where we have the ability to try and be on top of those numbers or forecast them accurately, there are aspects of this that are very much out of our control. And so that does contribute to where we're seeing. As far as the, the housing money, as you know, Anne Marie is currently working on an updated 10-year housing and homelessness plan. We do have some projects that are underway. There's also been some recent changes to how federal and provincial money might be available to make those happen. But right now, I think our performance suggests that we're working on somewhere in excess of $400,000 a unit if we were going to build a new somewhere, so it really does take a, you know, a significant investment to make us any kind of a substantial build viable.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Sue, and don't go away because I think you have the next report as well, and it's regarding the asset retirement policy. Someone care to move that, please? Councilor Keveney, Council, Councilor Patterson. Sue.
I will not be speaking to this report. I would like to introduce one of our financial analysts, Matt Hookham. He joined us last May and has been a great addition to our team, and I think you've heard enough from me today, so. Matt is definitely more of an expert in this area than I am, so I'll let you hear from Matt today. We're very happy to have him as a winner.
Welcome, Matt. Good to see you. Welcome.
Thank you for the introduction, Sue, and good morning, County Council. So as Sue mentioned, I'm gonna talk about our ARO policy, which is our asset retirement obligation. So I'm gonna start off with just kinda quickly go over what we're going to talk about today. So there's new PSAB standards, which is why we have to introduce this new policy, and I'll kind of explain why we are presenting this today. I'll then go into an explanation of what AROs are, give a couple common arrows that we have seen, and then lastly, and most importantly, how does this actually affect Gray County? So the new PSAB standard is PS3280, Asset Retirement Obligations. And this is basically a formal requirement that is being introduced so that we record the costs that, additional costs that we'll have to incur for certain disposing of certain assets. This is similar to a previous standard, 3270, which was in regards to landfills. But this kind of encompasses that and is an enhancement to that standard to be more broad and cover more, more items. This standard was initially released in 2018, but is mandatory beginning fiscal years, beginning on or after April 1st, 2022. So for Gray County, that means that the effective date is December 31st, 2023, which is the year end that we are working on right now with the auditors. So this is a standard that is applicable to all public sector organizations, so you'll see them within municipalities, as well as the school boards and hospitals, among other organizations like that. So what are AROs? So this is directly from the standard. The criteria for an asset retirement obligation means that there's a legal obligation to incur retirement costs in relation to a capital asset. A past transaction or event causing a liability has occurred. Expected future economic benefits will be given up and a reasonable estimate of the amount to be made. So in terms that we can actually understand and that are useful for us in finance, and hopefully a little more clear to you guys as well, is that there are certain capital assets that we have in the county that we have to incur an additional cost to dispose of. So this, this policy is in place to help us quantify these costs when it comes to account for them when we're disposing. So some of the examples that we have would be soil remediation, which we saw when we were moving the underground fuel tanks in Clarksburg, so there was an additional cost that we had to spend to get rid of the contaminated soil. Additionally, in a lot of our housing units, if there's asbestos, there's an additional cost that we have to incur to safely dispose of it and make sure that it is disposed of properly. So a couple of examples, I've mentioned a couple of these already, so there's asbestos, underground fuel storage tanks, landfills, lead, and other building materials, wastewater treatment facilities. Those are kind of the, the main ones that we've been seeing in municipalities in our area and among the working groups we've been working with. So now the big important question is how to suspect Gray County. So through our discussion and investigations, we've determined that the only ARO that we will have to quantify is asbestos in some of our buildings. As I mentioned, we removed an in-ground fuel tank last year, and that was the last one that we had at Gray County, so we no longer have to worry about those for this reporting. And since asbestos is generally only concerned when it's disturbed, we only have to incur these costs when we're disposing of the asset, whether that's through a major renovation, specific items that we have to replace, or larger scale renovations of buildings. So the reason that we have to report this is basically there are additional costs that we have to incur. We have to have subcontractors hired, hired so that they have the special training to dispose of asbestos safely and make sure that we're not spreading hazardous materials. So again, these, the main thing with this policy is that these costs are not new things. This is something we've been doing in the past. And this policy doesn't make it so that we're spending extra money. This policy is only in place to have a line on our financial statements that show in the future, we expect to spend this much on these remediation costs when it comes time to dispose of these items that we, it's not actually extra money that we're spending. We would be spending it regardless of this policy. And then this last slide kind of outlines what finance has been working on, and basically, this policy is here to make sure that we collect the relevant information. And we have created this policy to help provide us direction moving forward while working on AROs. It outlines the financial criteria for recognition and how we measure the estimated cost of the abatement and how the, we will be presenting the information in the financial statements. This is not just a one and done exercise. This is something that we will have to continually do every year, and we'll have to look at this policy and make sure that we're updating our numbers to be accurately reflected in our financial statements, which is why we're bringing this policy so that we have the direction each year moving forward. So there are discount rates and other items that we use in the policy, which we will be looking at every single year to make sure that they're still relevant and make sure that we are encompassing any error that we might have in the county, whether it's buying a new building, we will be making sure that we are inspecting it to see if there's anything we should be adding to our ARO policy, and on the other side as well, if we do any kind of abatement, we'll be removing it from our, our estimated cost for for the ARO. So that is all I have for discussion on the ARO policy. So I'll open the floor to any questions that may have.
Thank you, Matt. Are, are there any questions? Not seeing, not seeing any. I think it's fairly straightforward. All those in favor? That is carried. Thanks, Matt. Okay, we have another report here, final report regarding the draft asset, no, wait, the County Official Plan Amendment, 20. And I'm almost certain, given the time of the day, that Scott Taylor put Becky up to this. But in any case, welcome, Becky, and the floor is yours.
Yes, classic having the planning report just before lunch.
Yes, I need a mover and seconder. That's right. Councilor Carlton and Councilor Nielsen, thank you.
Okay, sorry for the delay on that. Um, just for everyone's benefit, my name is Becky Hillier. I am intermediate planner with Gray County. Uh, I'm just gonna be presenting very briefly, hopefully, on the County Official Plan Amendment number twenty, um, which is proposed on the Dundalk Cemetery lands, and it uh is a recapture of report P D R dash C W dash sixteen twenty-four. Uh, so the the recommendations that we're looking for today uh is to acknowledge that all written in oral submissions on official plan number twenty were considered and helped to make an informed recommendation and decision on this matter uh that report P D R C C W sixteen twenty-four be received and that amendment number twenty to the Gray County Official Plan to permit the redesignation of rural and hazard lands to primary settlement area for the purposes of permitting future residential subdivision, sorry, future residential development on a portion of lands legally described as part of Lot two twenty-nine, concession three southwest of the Toronto Sidney Road and the geographic township of Proton being part one of reference plan sixteen R eighty fifty-seven now in the township of Southgate be supported and a bylaw to adopt the county official plan be prepared for consideration by county council. Uh, so just to provide a brief uh background of the proposal, uh this O P A was submitted by the township of Southgate. They're the applicants for the proposal. Uh, and the application could to proposes to redesignate about zero point eight seven hectares or two point one five acres of land from the rural and hazard lands designation to the primary settlement area designation. So it'd be effectively expanding the settlement area of Dundalk by zero point eight seven hectares, so relatively small amount. Um, the subject property is locally known as the Maple Grove Cemetery. Um, the entirety of that property is about five point six hectares in size. Um, but the portion subject to the to the uh application today is only that zero point eight seven hectares. Um, the southern portion of the cemetery is actively used for cemetery purposes. Uh, but the portion we're speaking about today, uh which is part of the northern portion uh is vacant and unused at this time. The lands currently straddle the settlement area of Dundalk. Um, and so as I said, the effect would be to slightly expand the area of Dundalk. In terms of the surrounding land uses, so we see the uh subject property here in yellow. Um, the, as you can see, the the lower portion of the property, the southern southeastern portion is actively used for that cemetery, but it's the portion to the north uh kind of in that field area at the top that we're we're discussing today. Um, I'd just like to point out, uh you can see the the lands to the north of the subject property uh bordered in that red line. Uh, those lands were subject to um approval by the province for a minister's zone zoning order uh in two thousand and twenty-two, and so uh that property received zoning permission for a residential subdivision. Um, and it's my understanding that the township plans to uh surplus uh the the portion of the property that we're talking today uh as part of the cemetery lands and to merge that property in future with that M Z O property. And in exchange, the township would receive um some additional lands further along Gray Gray Road nine, um part of that M Z O property for the purposes of establishing uh a community services facility or hub. Um, some surrounding li- uh land uses, just to be aware of, uh it's mostly low-density residential um surrounding the property. Uh, there is a the township's municipal waste transfer station and a historic landfill site uh to the east and an institutional church use uh just to the east there as well. So in terms of the Planning Act applications required, we've got the the subject County Official Plan Amendment. Uh, we've also got a local official plan amendment to the township's uh official plan as well as a zoning bylaw amendment. So as I've noted, uh within the county's official plan, uh the 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 lands are designated as the primary settlement area, rural and hazard lands. In the township's official plan, their neighborhood area, hazard and rural. And within the zoning bylaw, it's community facility with a small area of environmental protection. Uh, we did all of the public meeting and circulation process uh in conjunction with the township, uh including a public meeting on the twenty-eighth and all notification provided under the plan. Uh, so just to to give everyone an idea of of kind of the scope of what we're talking about here, so um that brown rectangle is the entirety of the Maple Grove Cemetery property, and as you can see, uh it's kind of severed down the middle by that primary uh settlement area boundary, which forms the edge of of uh Dundalk at the moment. Um, and it's that kind of hatched area with the lines um uh going sort of diagonally um that we're talking about today. And so as you can see, um because of the approval of the M Z O land surrounding this property, it's created what I've referred to in the report as a bit of a rural island effect uh where the the lands almost entirely surrounding this portion of the the property uh are designated uh within the settlement area. So this this piece is a bit of an outlier in that respect. Uh, in terms of the documents submitted by the township, they provided a just planning justification report. Uh, we also um required a D four study in relation to that nearby landfill and waste transfer station. Uh, some supplemental information was also provided by the township uh just to ensure that um from a cemetery kind of growth and retention perspective uh that they are satisfied uh that they have uh sufficient space within that existing cemetery that's proposed to be retained to accommodate um, you know, anticipated future growth of the area and those uh burial needs uh going forward. Um, I just wanted to point out that um that that M Z O property and and the lands that are proposed to be merged with it. Um, they haven't been given any sort of approval for development at this time. They've only had the zoning uh put in place by the province. Um, and so at a future time when um the the developer does move forward with a a plan of subdivision at the county and the township will be seeking uh future comprehensive studies, including the standard servicing study, traffic studies, environmental impact studies, all of those types of things. Uh, generally, we didn't receive too many concerns uh on the proposal during the circulation process. Uh, just in important to point out, we did receive some comments from Grand River Conservation Authority. Uh, they confirmed that they had no objections to the redesignation of the hazard lands portion of the property. Uh, it was just an overland drainage feature and and that 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 section is proposed to be uh altered in its entirety uh through the the future development of the M Z O land, so that wasn't a concern for them. Um, we did receive one comment from the mem- a member of the public uh specifically from the uh funeral industry services. Um, that person had indicated just some kind of concerns and reservations about protecting the integrity and sanctity of that cemetery space. Um, so we did uh during the public meeting, address some of those comments. Uh, we acknowledged at the time of the draft plan of subdivision in future, uh we could look at some sort of uh buffering options between the cemetery and any uh planned residential subdivision. And we also just went back and forth with the township a bit just to make sure that um kind of from that space needs perspective that they were satisfied that the retained cemetery lands would meet their needs into the future. Hmm. As I mentioned, a public meeting was held on February twenty-eighth. Um, there weren't really too many, you know, uh big concerns or or questions raised. Uh, there were just sort of some general questions about kind of uh why the township had selected those lands to be surplus and and provide it to the developer and sort of what the township was anticipating to get um for that. And the clerk uh at that time, I thought, provided a really great overview was kind of showcasing some of the current trends around uh burial and cremation practices. And um particularly, it was noted that there's been a trend instead of sort of the standard burial plots. Um, a lot of folks have been have been moving more towards per- a preference for cremation, um which takes up a lot less land space and and so um looking at kind of the growth numbers of of the township. Um, township staff had had reported that with the retained cemetery lands, they have upwards of about of about fifty years left within their current cemetery. So in terms of key policy considerations, I won't go into too much detail here. It's 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 detailed in the report. Um, but just a few uh major things um within the Planning Act. One of the things that we need to have regard for is is whether this is an appropriate location of growth and development. Um, that's really echoed in the the provincial policy statement. It directs most growth to settlement areas. Uh, in section one point one point three point eight provides policy around how municipality uh should consider expanding an existing settlement area through a process called the comprehensive review process. And generally speaking, when a comprehensive review review process does happen, it looks at kind of all the land surrounding in a se- a settlement area, and it decides kind of, you know, from a holistic perspective, where makes the most sense for a municipality to grow. Um, but the P P S also provides a kind of a another provision that says in undertaking that comprehensive review, the level of detail of the assessment should correspond with the complexity and scale of a settlement boundary expansion or development proposal. So I just wanted to point out that because of the um M Z O approval here, it's kind of um forced the municipalities hand to some extent and kind of where that gr- a growth is is now kind of being uh moved forward and and in doing so, it's kind of created that island effect where it really does kind of impact the um connectivity of that land and the future development. Um, and so uh kind of for for the purposes of of reviewing this proposal, um we felt that the the level of review that um the township had done in putting forward their planning justification report uh was sufficiently scoped to to the scale of this one. So just a summary of the planning justification. Uh, the O P A would not permit the more efficient oh, sorry, would permit the more efficient residential development of the M Z O lands to the north if it were approved. Uh, the proposal would not impact prime agricultural lands or surrounding agricultural operations, including minimum distance separation. Justification has been provided by the township to indicate upwards of fifty years of supply available at the retained cemetery site. A D four study concluded that the development would not be impacted by the nearby historic landfill. G R C has G R C A has confirmed no concerns with redesignating the the hand hazard lands, and the proposed land swap would permit the township to access additional lands to develop a community service hub. So in summary, uh we feel that the um application does have sufficient regard for the Planning Act um and is sufficiently aligned with the direction of the provincial policy statement and the county's official plan. Uh, and we would reiterate uh the these recommendations. Uh, so that's all I have, but happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Becky. Are there any questions? Counselor Boddy.
Well, I was just gonna comment, uh, Worden Mill, that things probably won't change much and that people will still be dying to live in that property in in Dundalk.
It's hard to know how to respond to that, other than we're getting awfully close to lunch. But yeah, you're right. You're not wrong. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. So what I'm thinking is it's quarter past twelve. We have the one consent item. Why don't we dispense with that? And then we will break for lunch, and then we'll come back and do the closed session. Is everybody agreeable to that? Plan of attack? Okay, so the uh consent item was six A. It is correspondence from the municipality of Brighton regarding ride share services. Counselor Greg wanted that pulled, so I presume you will move that, or are you proposing it yes? And a seconder for that is Counselor Carlton. Counselor Greg.
Thank you, and just a simple question really here is uh to learn from staff in terms of what our involvement is related to the ride sharing, right? And it's you know, grassroots form, it's ride sharing is, hey, I'm in Flesherden, there's an app on your phone. I'm driving through Markdale and I see someone bang and he and then they share a ride. Some of it's morphed into taxis. But for the most part, we don't, I don't think we should have too much of a role at all uh with ride sharing and and the transportation. So I'm just wondering, what is the role that we currently have? What kind of staffing resources are required for for supporting the advancement of ride sharing, et cetera?
I see uh Stephanie Stewart has uh has joined us. Stephanie, do you want to uh respond to that, please?
Yes, please, Warden. Thank you. Um, and uh C A O Windgrove, if you can add anything in that I missed, that would be excellent, too. Um, in regards to ride sharing, what we're doing right now is we have been speaking with industry leaders, and we're also speaking with M T O uh in regards to different options we can take um moving forward and what rural transit and in the future of ride sharing and carpooling and future transit will look like. Um, all those discussions are happening, so we're just in that process of kind of figuring that out. Um, as far as I understand, the the whole kind of concept of this item on the consent agenda is really just to start buying into the concept of having one united bylaw across the entire province rather than having every municipality having their own. Um, by having one bylaw, we would allow for more seamless travel um and also just safety standards to be applicable across the entire province so that you know when you're getting in a ride share vehicle, you know, whether that's in Waterloo or Toronto or Durham, you can expect the same safety standards. So that's kind of what could be achieved by a provincial bylaw. Um, and I think that the idea of this item is just to support it and allow us to continue the conversations um with the province.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, C A O Windgrove, do you want to add anything?
Oh, only just to to build on what Stephanie said, that at the present time, there's a patchwork of of municipal bylaws. Some places have municipal bylaws that actually speak to ride sharing and um and many don't, but it makes it very challenging for um the ride share companies or individuals that would be looking to offer a ride share service to operate efficiently and cost effectively when there's not um a single standard in even in within the area that they they might find valuable to operate in. So um i- if and especially at at this time when with regards to um what fair standards need to look like, some of those are are very different um a- around the province and even with our own area. So this is Brighton hearing from the industry and and stepping forward to say, Province, if you could help us all here by establishing a foundation from which we can all work, that would be helpful.
Thanks, Kim. Does that answer? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's good. I just wanted to be certain that uh we have a framework here that you know, if someone graduates from U W and in ten minutes they create a pick-me-up app on their phone that government is out of the way and not too involved in what the private enterprise should be able to and and how they should be able to conduct themselves and, you know, fill that need in the marketplace. So I think that's that's what I'm hearing is is we don't have a lot of involvement at this time, and that's why I was hoping I'd hear it.
That is correct. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Okay, let's uh let's recess for lunch. We'll see if we can be back about one o'clock. And uh we'll go from there. Close sessions. Thank you, Rob. I guess it's twelve, that's twelve fifty-nine. I suppose that's close enough. It's one o'clock somewhere. So Peter's back, so we're on time. It's perfect. I don't know about the rest of the area, but I had a piece that strudel. Wow. That was pretty good. So I don't know who ordered lunch today, but take note. That was great. The rest of it was awesome, too. All right. Uh, we'll call the meeting back to order. We have three closed meeting matters. Uh, I have a motion here. The committee of the hold does now go into closed session pursuant to section two, three, nine of the municipal act as amended to discuss, one, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, specifically the Blue Meadows appeal update for plan of subdivision four, two, T, twenty, twenty-two dash zero, two. Two, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, specifically an update on the appeal of Thornbury Acres plan of condominium. And three, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before And three, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, specifically an official plan amendment 11 Appeals Update. So would someone care to move that, please? Counselor Body, seconded by Counselor, maybe not Counselor, yeah, Counselor Nielsen, thank you. Appreciate the, the eagerness there, sir, but maybe not. Okay, all those in favor? That is carried. So Scott will just, and we'll, we'll deal with them in the order that I read them, so. Thank you, Rob. Thank you. We are now back in open session, and I can confirm that we only discussed those three items that we were listed, were listed on the closed meeting agenda. Any other business in front of this council today? I don't see any. Notice is a motion. Counselor Body?
Thank you, Warden Millen. Through you, I give notice that I will move for the next regular Gray County Council meeting be held on April 25th, 2024, that Council Gray County declares support for TC Energy and the Saugian and Gibway Nation proceeding with a proposed facility or pump storage facility subject to applicable approvals, assessments, and of course, the approval of the Saugian and Gibway Nation.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Body, and you can, I'm sure you'll work with the clerk to finalize the wording on that motion. Any other notices of motion? Okay, not seeing any. Counselor Boarder, do you want to adjourn?
I assume move.
Thank you, sir. Seconder, Counselor Hallwood. All in favor? That's carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.